So if you'll just bear with us, we'll be starting momentarily.
Oh, Mr. No, I have a complaint about that.
Okay, I've been given the green light. We are gonna go ahead and get started. Thank you for joining us. We're gonna start with our meeting. The City of Castle Hill City Council will convene into a regularly scheduled meeting on December 10th, 2019 at 6:30 PM in the council chambers located at 209 Lemonwood Drive, Castle Hills, Texas. And I call the Castle Hills Regular City Council meeting in order and determine if a quorum is present. Everybody's here? A quorum is present? I believe we have Mr. Pinkston here for our invocation.
Well, let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we just want to thank you at this amazing time of the holidays and just, just thank you for the incredible community spirit at the lighting of the lights the other night and just the Christmas spirit that's pervading our community and just the goodwill that there is. I just pray that that spirit would just be real and alive in this, in this meeting tonight, probably big issues and maybe even tough things to face, challenges to overcome. And I just pray that you would give each of these council members, especially these fine two gentlemen that have just joined the council, just pray that there'd just be a spirit of wisdom and just justice, making things right and, and leading for the benefit of this amazing community and the people who live in it. Thank you for the citizens who are gathered here today and I pray that this city would be a better place because we were all here tonight. And again, I thank you for the service of our staff here. We love them so much and, and for this council. Just so grateful for the time they give from their families, from their personal lives to lead and to take care of us. Bless them real good in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Mr. Pinkston. Next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Colonel Schultz, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Colonel. Don't believe we have any presentations. And Jeanette is bringing the citizen to be heard. So give me one second.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Winger.
I've had several complaints from people who are trying to wash the meetings and they say the sound is too low. So I just wanted to bring that up. It seems to keep happening.
Is this from this meeting, Ms. Winger? Can you use your microphone?
Tonight, but prior meetings that they have been able to hear.
Mr. Rappley, I believe that you've addressed this recently, correct?
Yes, Mayor, in my city manager's report, I mentioned that we were looking and troubleshooting the audio and video and since then have had someone come in to make the necessary repairs to the audio and Ustream. So it should be working immensely better at this point.
Thank you so much. Okay, citizens to be heard. I don't think we have anybody signed up. Doctor, okay, let me see. I might be giving this backwards. Dr. Flynn, yes, sir? Just to remind you, if you can state your name and address, and you have three minutes, sir.
Right. My name is Mike, Dr. Mike Flynn. I live in Amerson Lane. Last month during the city council meeting, there was a lot of discussion on the RFPs that were sent out for acquiring our accounting firm. And Ms. Winger raised a lot of very good questions about the lack of RFPs and whether enough, had been distributed enough and whether enough time was allotted for people to respond. I felt those were really good questions. I think an RFP is always a good thing to put out. But I have a question. Why was there so much concern? This, Ms. Winger, this question's for you. I was wondering why you had so much concern for the RFPs to get an accounting firm, but you didn't raise those same issues when you wanted to hire, do a direct hire for an employment attorney? So it seems to me there's a little inconsistency here and I'd like an explanation of why it's valid and important to have RFPs to hire an accounting firm, but not to put out RFPs or even a request for qualifications to hire an attorney. Now, I realize that rules of this committee don't allow you to speak to or address citizens to be heard, but it seems like you and Mr. Sanderson have done this before and it hasn't prevented you from interrupting me before. So I will reserve the rest of my time, the rest of my three minutes while I wait for your response.
Dr. Flynn, do you have any other comments?
Sorry?
Do you have any other comments?
I'm reserving the rest of my time while I wait for my response from Ms. Winger.
I don't know that Ms. Winger can respond to you, Dr. Flynn.
She's responded and interrupted me before many times and I am soliciting her input this time.
Mr. Small, Mr. Schnell, I don't think it's appropriate to respond even though she may have, Ms. Winger may have done it before. Would you care to offer an opinion?
I'll stop the clock while we wait.
Oh, Mayor, the, the purpose of citizens to be heard is for the council to hear from citizens. It is not for debate or responses by the council other than to provide information about city policies or to make a request that the item being, being raised by the citizen is something that should be put on a future agenda. So there's no requirement that Ms. Winger or any other member of the governing body respond. This is an opportunity for the council to be, to be listening and citizens to speak.
Okay. Well, I'll accept that opinion and I will offer my own observation in that I think the truth of the matter is, the reason it was important for her to get an RFP for an accounting firm is to find more ammunition to attack our city manager with. On the other hand, hiring, doing a direct hire for an attorney was in her benefit. So the truth of the matter is, in my opinion, is that she works for her own self-interest, to her own benefit. And Ms. Winger, you can't handle the truth. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flynn. Let's see. Stop the clock. Who else do we have signed up to speak? Uh, yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Gerald Bickerstaff. I live at 605 Antler Drive and I don't know necessarily if this is a proper forum to address this, but I was addressing the Phase III Antler project. All for it, knew those, those issues needed to be corrected, so I'm all for the project. However, the project actually extends a third of the way to the, to the, to the east, further down. Actually, right into the front of my property, which people use my driveway as a turnaround. And, you know, I've already lost one mailbox is all you've been ran into. I've got a cracked sidewalk. I've got these guys in front of my house, I've got pictures of it, cutting the, or cutting the asphalt, making, making a mess, which, again, I'm all for it, but if that was part of the project, I guess we should have known in advance before they continue on down Antler towards my house. If they're, if they were gonna stop at Buckaroo, fine, stop at Buckaroo, which that's what they, all indication that's, that's what it was supposed to be for. So that's kind of what I'm bringing up. What do they intend to do with the rest of Antler? Are they gonna continue to asphalt down Antler? Are they gonna put in sidewalks since they continue down there? What are they gonna do with that? I've already made a police report on my mailbox being knocked down, but again, it wasn't what we expected it, expect it to, it was supposed to stop at Buckaroo, but it continues on down Antler.
Thank you, sir. I'm sure Mr. Rappley will reach out to you and hopefully be able to provide you some background on what's going on. Okay, do we have anybody else? Mr. Rappley, is there any way we could turn it down a little bit? I feel like it's whining. Is that just me? Chief, can you, can you take care of that? That's the word I was looking for. Thank you. Okay. Okay, so that's where we're at for right now. Next, we'll proceed to the consent agenda. Items are self-explanatory by the city council or have been previously discussed and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council members so request. The consent agenda is for consideration by the city council only and not subject to public discussion. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Do we have a discussion?
Are we talking about the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am, that's the item we're on right now.
I, I have a question about the, the final pair of minutes because I don't understand why the council had to vote on anything. According to Mr., according to what it says here, Mr. Schnell said they couldn't go forward with the rest of the agenda. What wasn't go, what was taken off?
I'm, I'm not sure I understood your question. Mr. Schnell, did you catch that?
I don't know what Ms. Winger is referring to. If she's referring to the November 12th minutes, in the November 12th minutes, there were two or three or, I think there were three items on the agenda for the number, the November 12th meeting, but only the canvas could be done because there was not a quorum for the special meeting. So the, the meeting on November 12th had to be adjourned after the canvas of the election results because there were only three members of the governing body, not counting the mayor, present and there needed to be four members to do the other items on the agenda.
That's my question. What were the other items?
Ms. Winger, the, the agenda is a public record. I believe it's still available on the website. I do not have it with me, so I cannot tell you what those other items are with any sense of accuracy. I'm sure that either the city manager or the city secretary can provide a copy of the agenda for the number, November 12th meeting to you tomorrow.
I would be happy to recollect that it was the swearing in of two new city council members and the administration of the oath of office.
So you're telling me that you weren't sworn in that night?
No, ma'am. I'm telling you that it did not happen during that meeting, but it did take place.
Okay.
Outside of the, the meeting.
I would just like to request, because normally the swearing in does not happen during the council meeting, that it would just, you know, you would just add in here that the adjourned for the swearing in because it, it sounds like there was no swearing in and I think the citizens would like to know that there was. So just to say that it was adjourned for the swearing in. Thank you.
Ms. Winger, is that a, a motion to change the minutes or?
Yes, to add, to add that it was adjourned, that the meeting was adjourned for the swearing in.
Okay, we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it.
We have a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Mr. Gregory?
I won't be speaking much tonight, but what is the purpose of this motion?
I'm sorry?
What is the purpose of this motion?
The purpose of the motion is that the way that the minutes read, it sounds like nobody was sworn in when in fact there was a swearing in. And normally what it says in the minutes is that the meeting was adjourned so that the new council people could be sworn in and that's it. That's all I wanted added so that it's clear to everybody that there was a swearing in.
Ms. Winger, I'll ask Mr. Schnell to verify, but I don't know that the fact that somebody was sworn in after the meeting is germane to the minutes for that meeting. Mr. Schnell?
It, it is not, Mayor. The, the minutes are to reflect what actually happened during the meeting and, and do not ordinarily reflect what happened before or before the meeting was called to order or after the meeting was adjourned. There were 50 or 75 people in the room when that meeting concluded and those folks in the room knew and were present when oaths of office were administered to Mr. Isbrand and Mr. May. There are signed oaths and there are signed statements of elected official are on file with the city secretary. So there is clear evidence that they did have the oath of office administered and sign the necessary document. It's up to the council whether to, you know, vote for or against Ms. Winger's motion to amend.
Thank you so much. We have a motion by Ms. Winger. We have a second by Mr. Sanderson. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, the, the amendment fails. So we're back to the original. Do we have a motion for items A, B, C, and D?
I believe I move the approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second by Mr. May. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much, council. First item, new business discussed and possible action on ordinance number 2019-12-10 in ordinance of the City of Castle Hills, Texas repealing and replacing the fee schedule enacted by ordinance number 2019-08-13 and adopting a new City of Castle Hills Fee Schedule 2019. Mr. Rappley?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. In August, we brought forward the fee schedule, which was to modify our residential permitting fees related to square foot methodology to comply with the new state law. As we continued to do further research, as well as other cities are doing, we figured out that we needed to delineate some other fees associated with commercial and residential. So at this point, what we've done is to outline these with the same manner as square footage to comply. As I mentioned, we've done the further research and we've broken out and delineated these residential fees. For instance, fences, pools, and other residential fees, which are in the fee schedule. We've also done a square foot methodology for plumbing, mechanical, and electrical that we hadn't been done before. As we went through the fee schedule itself, Ms. Fiegans and Mr. Sammarone did extensive research and review of this fee schedule to make sure we've captured all fees related to the City of Castle Hills that we provide to citizens through services. And as, at this point, it's to repeal and replace the one that was approved and/or amended in August to make sure this is the one we have moving forward. Probably, we're going to monitor the fees as they move forward over the next six months and, and make sure they're in line with how we used to do value for residential fees. And if not, then we may amend it later down the road right now. But right now, I think we've captured all fees related to the City of Castle Hills from that standpoint.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I, I propose that we adopt ordinance number 2019-12-10.
Thank you, Mr. May.
Second.
Second by Mr. Isbrand. Do we have a discussion?
May I just ask a question? Mr. Rappley, just for the, the benefit of those of us who have looked at this and those who may be in the audience or listening tonight. This is in no way a reflection of any increase in fees. This is just a, if you will, an aggregation of, of the fees. Is that correct? In one place?
Yes, sir. Again, there's not a change and/or increase in fees allotted on this fee schedule. It's, again, to make sure we're in line with what other cities have had to do to change their residential fees. During the state law or the impact of the state legislation, the state didn't tell cities how to do residential fees because previously we were doing value on both commercial and residential. So we are like other cities, kind of learning as we go and trying to adhere to this new state law and make sure that we are covering fees related to services and inspections moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Winger.
Yes, I noticed, first of all, that you say that you're changing the methodology, but yet on the page for residential building permit fees, it's still per square foot. So where is the change?
It's commercial that was corrected.
It's the commercial. We did not delineate some commercial fees that should have been residential as well that we had to go to a square foot methodology as well. So again, it was just delineating more fees that were commercial, that were done on value, and now delineating them for residential fees as well.
So, so you're saying that now we're going to, to measure the, the fee? And that we weren't doing that before? Because that's not what I read.
No, that's not the case, Ms. Winger. Again, we didn't have the residential, for instance, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. You know, we were, we had to revisit the square footage methodology. Plus, we had to change how we are doing it in code as well. Laura, go ahead.
Let me give a little bit of help on that. Under commercial, on page three, at the very bottom, you'll see electrical and temporary meter loop, commercial, mechanical, electrical, commercial fence, commercial re-roof, roof, flatwork. Those were in the other one and the way they read, they weren't listed as commercial or residential. And they were said goes by the fee schedule. That didn't get changed. It was already changed under residential. One could assume it should be commercial would be that, but since it didn't really clearly delineate that, we cleaned that up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not questioning the commercial.
So we didn't change, residential did not. And we did not change the residential.
You didn't change it. Okay, so we didn't change the methodology for residential?
No, 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 no.
That's, that's the first question.
Yes, yes.
The second question is that I noticed that we charge $200 for architectural review and $400 for board of adjustment. Why is that? Why don't we charge the same?
Those fees have been in place prior to my tenure.
Well, but we could change it since we're changing other things. I mean, it's kind of a heavy load for people, especially residents, if we wanted to make it residential or commercial, but that's not what it says here, so.
Again, that would be council's prerogative. Those fees related to public hearing fees have been in place before I took tenure as city manager, Ms. Winger.
Okay, so, well, I'd like to recommend that, that we consider changing the board of adjustment to the $200 to make it less onerous for residents and.
And some of those fees cover public hearing notices as well.
Right, but so does architectural review. And then on page five, there's animal fees. What is the impoundment fee? What is that for?
Impoundment. Mr. Rado, would you like to go? It's covered on the animal fees for a shelter.
Good evening. Animal control, once it's called out for a running, animal running at large, we go ahead and charge an impoundment fee. That's for the processing, pictures, case number, and then putting it inside the shelter. And then what, go ahead?
So it's, it's to go out and pick up an animal that's running loose or something?
Yes, miss.
And then is it by the day or what?
No, that's just the, the first impoundment fee.
Okay.
Then by the day, it's $8 a day.
How much?
$8 a day to board and, board and feed the, the pet until it's picked up by the pet owner.
So could we just say that, that it's $8 a day? Because that's, it says set by animal control. Well, I'd like, people should know what it is. If it's $8 a day, then we should put that down.
Well, it, it is for the boarding, but just not for, just like pets or owners to come and board pets there, but it's only to board the pet until it's picked up by the pet owner. But first process is for the $35 impoundment for the process.
Yeah, I understand that and I get the fact that you have to go out. I know it's a big job. We all appreciate it, believe me. But the boarding fee, if it's per day and it's $8 per day, then we should just say that so that we don't have the situation that we've had so many times before where somebody suddenly is told it's something different and they have no way of looking it up because according to this, you can charge whatever you want.
No, I'm sorry.
You understand what I'm saying?
Right, Ms. Winger, and I'm sorry, but I'm not.
Are these, are these fees posted anywhere? Do we have this, a public posting?
That's what I was gonna say, Mr. Anderson, right now, was that our fees apply that as to per day and then we place that on there and they'll show like if it's there five days, then it's eight times the five of the days that it's there, plus the $35 impoundment. Then it also has a breakdown of itemized, like if it doesn't have rabies vaccination, first pound, first time notice, if it doesn't have registration, all that's incrementally broke down.
But that's separate.
Yes, miss.
But that's separate.
But also.
All I'm asking is that if it's $8 per day, we should just say that.
Yes, sir.
Just say $8 a day and then that's the end, that's all. Thank you.
Yes, miss.
I do have a question, sir. Are these publicly posted anywhere as far as a, a schedule? Can anybody just walk into the Public Works Office or the, the front office here and actually see a schedule of these fees, publicly posted?
They're, they're on the website posted, but I think I missed a question at the beginning.
So the answer would be no, there's no public posting here in the physical buildings. Is that correct?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, sir, it is not. It's just posted on the website. Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion or can we, would you like to make a motion to add that in there, Ms. Winger?
I have one other question, if I could.
By all means.
Yes, so a question over the fee. So when I did my fence on Atwater, I had to go and pay a fee based on the, the estimated value of the fence itself. So I noticed here that the, that if I'm reading this correctly and I very well could be wrong, is that the, the, the fee now is $140 fixed. Is that accurate?
Yes, as far as residential, it's, it's a flat fee of $140.
So there has been a change, at least within the last two, three years, when it comes to how the fees are collected for specific items. Is that correct?
These fees have been in place until we've had to amend it per state law.
Okay, I guess I'm confused. So explain for somebody who doesn't understand what you just said there.
Again, we amended this in August, per state law, like I mentioned before.
Oh, okay, okay. That's, that's all I wanted to hear. Okay, thanks. Okay, great. Thank you, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I would like to amend the fee that's charged for board of adjustment down to $200 to conform with architectural review and also to state that the boarding fee on the animals' fees is $8 a day.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that, yes.
Any discussion?
I, I think that in general it'd be nice to go and have these fees set at a reasonable rate to encourage folks to go ahead and utilize the, the resources. These, the fees themselves seem to be kind of arbitrary as far as the valuation is concerned and I really haven't seen or heard any justification for why one is more than the other. If somebody certainly has an insight into that, I'd like to hear.
Okay, all in favor of Ms. Winger's amended motion? Opposed? Motion passes three to two. Now we go back to the original. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Item number two, public hearing on the proposed amendments from the recommendation by the zoning commission regarding revisions to Chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances. Do we have anybody here from the zoning commission or would you like to? Ms. Baker, would you like to speak now or would you like to have the public go first? Okay, it is 6:59 and we're gonna open the public hearing. I believe Mr. McCormick is signed up.
Clyde McCormick, 207 Carroll. I reviewed as much as I could the 72 pages of proposed changes to the zoning code, which were mostly redlined. I found some discrepancies that are not addressed in the proposed changes and suggest that there may be some additional research required for the proposed changes to meet the standard we'd like to set for them. First of all, I noticed that in section 50.07, referred. First of all, I noticed that in Section 50.07 refers to and cites to Section 31.1709 of the 1995 Code. And Section 50.07 is under a heading of "Any Proposed Changes to the Zoning Code." However, Chapter, Section 31.1709 is in a Section 31.17, which is headed "Special Use Permits."
Excuse me, could we get the page number of Mr. Mayor?
This is my time, Ms. Winger.
Mr. McCormick, please proceed.
Section 31.1700 is the title section for Section, all 17, all Section 17 parts of the code, and it's under a heading listing special use permits. So, there are problems with that. It looks to be, from my exploration, that Section 31.1709 was miscodified when the code was updated from the 1995 Code to the current code. In addition, there are some other errors that I believe are present in the proposed changes to the code, and they have to do with the fact that the code appears to be laid out in accordance with Chapter 25 responsibilities for the city manager and the mayor. Most of the references, which would be to the mayor under Chapter 22, are listed in the change, the proposed changes, as to the city manager. The problem with our code is that we suppose that our code is based on Chapter 25, which is a city manager, council, form of government, when, in fact, the articles that proposed to change our code to a Chapter 25 code were done illegally. There was no vote, no election, electing Chapter 25. And I have written on this, it was published in the Castle Hills Reporter a couple of months back. You can take a look at it if you want. There is an Attorney General opinion which states that without the election, we cannot elect Chapter 25. So, what that means to us is that we're under Chapter 22. We can appoint a city manager under Chapter 22.07, two, I believe it is. If we choose, and we can assign duties to that city manager. Fact is, that hasn't been done. And so, the references to the city manager and mayor in this proposed change to Chapter 50 appears to have some problems that have not yet been resolved. For that reason, I don't think it's ripe yet for consideration for approval. I think there are a number of things that need to be looked at before we try to approve something that is not quite altogether done, not mainly the fault of the zoning commission, but because of the history of our council having made this original decision in 1963. Based on merely a decision of the city council, there was no vote in 1963. It was done again in February of 2016 by Mayor Howell's council, but there was no vote and no election, as required under Chapter 25, and that law has been in place since 1944.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Ms. Scott.
Thank you, counsel. Moreta Scott, 207 Prince Drive. As I was looking at this, I could barely get out of the definition section. I had several issues with some of the definitions. And I had a question, where were these definitions taken from? Were they written by the zoning commission themselves, or were they taken from other cities? Were they found on other websites from other cities? State definitions, legal definitions? Where did the definitions come from? That's my, that was my first question. Because the first issue I had was under the new assisted living definition. It states that arrangements for elderly and from or disabled. Well, the word elderly, I could not find a legal definition of what consists of an elderly individual. I found anything from the age of 55 to 70. So, elderly is kind of a iffy term there on what constitutes elderly. Most legal documents I found actually stated an age at which, so instead of just using a vague term like an elderly person, they actually stated at what age elderly began. Also, on the childcare definition, this one really concerned me. I wanted to know if the use of the word facility made a difference, because it describes a facility licensed, certified, or registered by the Department of Family and Protective Services. I know to foster children, or foster to adopt children, you have to be certified or registered by the Department of Family and Protective Services. And because under here it's listed taking custody of children, I wouldn't want to hinder any family in the City of Castle Hills who wanted to foster children, take custody of them, and maybe potentially adopt them, to be limited from doing that in their home in a single-family, you know, residential A-type dwelling. And so, that's my question, is this limiting people that are zoned A from fostering and possibly adopting because of the word custody? Or if because the word facility is in there, it would mean they have to actually claim themselves a facility? I do not want to be known as the city that's against taking care of children, helping them, providing them with homes. And that really concerned me under the childcare center definition, because of the word custody being in there, and supervision of a child who's not related by blood, marriage, or adoption. I would hate someone to get an emergency placement, and suddenly they realize all of a sudden they're operating a facility and they don't know it. So, let's look carefully at that one and make sure that it meets that, and it's not keeping families from wanting to do a loving act by taking in children, fostering or eventually adopting them. My next question was under guest house. Guest house means living quarters, detached accessory buildings located on the premises. It states in there it's used for only by temporary guests, six consecutive months or less. I think we might need to relook at that, because, quite honestly, as my parents are aging, and we have facilities to put them in on our property, like a guest home, a mother-in-law type suite, it could definitely be longer than six months, and they're my family members, and to only allow them to live there for six months before they have to leave, and there's nothing in there that says, you know, we move them out for a month, move them back in, or whatever. So, I really question that, no longer than six months in a guest home, particularly if it is a family member. So, that might need to be relooked at, it's on its own. And then, my last one I have here is on memory care. The word Alzheimer's disease is used, and that is a diagnosis given, but it's one that's kind of a tentative diagnosis. It's not ever confirmed definitely until autopsy, which means the person is deceased. So, perhaps just using cognitive diseases only, and not using the term Alzheimer's in there, might be better and clearer, because you can get that diagnosis, but it's kind of one of those of, you know, they've ruled everything out. So, you might want to look at that as well. I also questioned if perhaps, instead of a public hearing, a town hall meeting might be a good thing to have on this, because this really affects all of us as a community. And I know a lot of people would like to give more input than maybe just a public hearing in three minutes, and I'm sure my time is almost up. So, I'm gonna leave you with the question of, would you consider having a town hall meeting concerning this with a full presentation, and allow people to really absorb it, and have more time to think about what some of these definitions are going to, how they're going to affect us? Particularly in care of our, even people that aren't family members. And that was a lot of my concern, too. I know I have a lot of close friends of my parents that are getting older, that I'm close to, that are like second family, second parents to me, and I would hate to not have the ability to take them in and offer hospice care in my home, or take them in and offer long-term care in my own home, because suddenly I'm deemed a facility because I'm having them there. So, I just had a lot of questions on that, on how some of these definitions would affect me personally, or any family here that's having those issues. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Do we have anybody else who would like to speak? Brother Dooling, please.
I didn't sign up, because I couldn't review the whole thing.
It's a public hearing, so anybody's welcome. Please make your way up.
Brother William Dooling, 201 Gladiola Lane. I just wanted to add one small comment to what Ms. Scott was saying under, I practiced family law for 30 years. The word custody, as it's in here, does not mean what she thinks it means. I was talking to Douglas on Monday. The care, custody, and control is a term of art in child facilities and childcare. That means just having them, having physical possession. Care, custody, and control of the child. Legal custody, the word custody does not appear in the Texas Family Code in that sense. Legal custody is defined as managing or possessory conservatorship, and that's a legal term. Care, custody, and control is a term of art to just say you have the care, custody, and control, you have possession of those children. Thank you.
Thank you, Brother Dooling. Do we have anybody else? Okay, it is 7:10. We're gonna close the public hearing and proceed to item number three, discussion, possible action on a recommendation by the zoning commission to the city council on amendments to Chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances, based on recommendations from the zoning review committee. Ms. Baker?
Janet Baker, 213 Hibiscus Lane. Most of the recommendations for definitions were provided to us by the city manager, and we understood that we were being provided with definitions that were under best practices. So, we weren't always given a lot of scrutiny to what the definitions meant, and also, when we were discussing them, and that was probably almost three years ago, there wasn't a lot of, there were recommendations made, motions made, but they weren't passed. So, that would address some of the issues raised by Ms. Scott. As far as discussion of Alzheimer's and all those other things, same thing. I think it's a term of art, and it was, it appeared in whatever Mr. Rapley was reviewing and got put in there. Those are all subject to change. As you know, the proposal that we made, the proposals we made are subject to your review, and we'll welcome them back, and can tweak them further if that's what you desire.
Thank you so much, Ms. Baker.
Question?
Yes, Mr. Anderson.
Ms. Baker?
So, a citizen brought up the term, basically, facilities and foster care and that sort of stuff like that. So, that is something that piqued my interest here. Is there anything that you're aware of within the code as it either currently stands or would stand, that would specifically prevent anybody from keeping foster cared children within their household?
Not to my knowledge. Foster care wasn't something that was even brought up. Most of it was related to caring for children who do not belong to you, or that might belong to you, or to neighbors and family members, but doing it as a business, a childcare scenario. And so, we didn't discuss foster care. Foster care can be a beneficial thing and a financial recompense, but that wasn't anything we discussed. So, there's nothing that I know of that prevents foster children from being fostered in Castle Hills.
I guess in the nominal sense, where somebody is going to foster one or two children and are not doing it as a group home, or some other kind of commercial venture, that's what we're focusing on right here for this purpose.
Foster care wasn't mentioned. It was childcare for hire.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Ms. Winger?
Well, I think that it may be that the point that Ms. Scott was making, I'm not sure if she can clarify it, but there have been stories in the newspaper, it hasn't happened here that we know of, where you have families that take in a whole bunch of children to foster them, which isn't usually beneficial. I think you would agree with that. So, I think that her point is well-taken, that we might want to clarify that.
That would be a good idea, and I also know that there are a lot of families that take in special needs foster children, and they do it primarily because they have a background and experience, and they've been through a lot of training. So, yes, I would certainly not want to see any children declined to be fostered in our community under those circumstances.
Right. I didn't think so. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions, counsel? We have citizens to be heard. We have Mr. McCormick.
What do you mean? We just had a public hearing. We just had a public hearing.
Counsel would hear from Ms. Scott to clarify?
Why would we have an...
Come on up, Ms. Scott, please.
Moreta Scott, 207 Prince Drive. I just wanted to clarify, you said you were concerned. My concern was the word custody in there, because custody of a child, but Brother Dooling, I think he clarified for me that, that there is a legal definition of custody concerning having custody of a child temporarily, being paid to care for that child, like a babysitting type service versus foster care. I just wanted to make sure we weren't limiting the ability of families to take in foster children, particularly since, Ellen, I know a lot of families that want to adopt, they foster first, and they end up adopting those foster children, and I don't want to limit their ability to do that. So, the word custody was what kind of had me questioning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Mr. McCormick, you're up for number three, if you'd like.
Clyde McCormick, 207 Carrollwood. In view of Ms. Baker's comments and the clarification sought by Ms. Scott, it appears to me appropriate at this point to consider tabling this matter for a month till the next council meeting, so that the definitions may be clarified, and so that the questions that I've previously raised about the propriety of previous codification updates can be looked at more closely. That's my recommendation to the counsel.
Thank you so much. Brother Dooling, you're signed up for number three as well?
Just as a catch-all, in case something caught my attention.
Okay. Just giving you the benefit of the doubt. Okay, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I propose that we table this till January with specific purpose, and that purpose being look at the, looking at the matters that former Councilman McCormick brought to our attention, because there may be a deeper problem that we need to address, and that is the reference to Chapters 25 and 22.
We have a first one, Mr. May, and a second one, Mr. Gregory. All in favor?
Discussion?
Discussion, I'm sorry. Mr. Esbrand.
Just a couple things. The points that are made here tonight are very valid, but if I could take a moment, if we look back at this body of work that's been done here, I'd remind the counsel that the zoning review committee took over, or approximately, one year to go through this process, before anything was then brought to the zoning commission, which took more than one year, at least the time I served on it, to go through this process, in addition to the time that the zoning commission that is now seated went through this. So, we're looking at a two-and-a-half-year-long process here that's taken place so far. It is my personal opinion that all that we're doing here is putting a Band-Aid on things, that our zoning ordinance was in pretty rough shape, and we could probably use some professional help in bringing it up to where it actually should be, as a city hour size, et cetera, et cetera. To the points that were raised tonight, I think the way you've phrased your motion, Mr. May, I feel like it's almost constricting us to limit it, what we're doing because of these items, and I think it's equally as important, or would be equally as valuable for us as council members, to take that amount of time to identify any other issues that we could then bring back in January with a direction, either back to the city manager and/or zoning commission, to ask them for clarification. I apologize, it's a very long-winded way of suggesting, maybe if that language was modified a little bit, it would allow us to bring back some actionable items as well in January.
Oh, sorry, that was from earlier.
Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
That wasn't for you. Okay, do we have any other discussion? Ms. Winger?
I would like to ask that, of the people who spoke, if they would please submit to all of us in writing what their concerns are, so that we can take that into account, as well as our own concerns, if we have them, and bring them back, because it's very hard to absorb all of this while it's being stated orally.
I agree. I think it's a great idea.
Ms. Scott certainly did a lot of research, and I'd like to see it.
I would agree. That'd much easier for us to track it that way. Mr. Gregory?
I'm sorry?
No.
Well, we made a motion to table, so I think that there's, we're just discussing, we probably shouldn't have even had a discussion once there was a motion to table, but I don't know if it was seconded.
Mr. Schnell, you have something on your mind?
The motion to table required a vote without discussion. Since there seems to be a lot of discussion, it may be appropriate for the council to, at this point in the meeting, to vote to not adopt the motion to table, to allow further discussion, and then a motion to table could be made later if it was appropriate.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Well, Mr. May's motion is out there. Again, I think that the value of this would be rather than tabling it, would be to make whatever request to the community we're asking, make whatever, give whatever direction to council to bring back next month.
But we can't have a discussion about that until this motion is dealt with, either withdrawn or voted down.
And that's my point, Mr. Schnell, as to Mr. May.
Mr. May? Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, I withdraw the motion. I'd ask that we move to discussion.
Okay.
If there's any further.
Mr. Gregory, do you concur with that withdrawal?
Thank you so much.
Mr. Gregory nodded yes.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Do we have a motion?
So, we're finished? In other words, we're finished with the discussion?
We're finished with discussion, now we're back.
We're back in discussion on the agenda item. There is no motion on the floor at this time.
My motion, before we get into Mr. May's motion, was to ask Ms. Scott and Mr. McCormick and anybody else who has anything they think we need to look at, to please submit it to the city manager in writing, who will then submit it to council, so that we can review that with enough time, so that we can finally not keep kicking the can down the road, as Mr. Esbrand has pointed out, and get to this in January. So, my motion is to get all of the recommendations that are put forward by the citizens tonight in writing.
Okay, we have a first?
Second?
Second? Do we have a discussion? Or was that, that's to table, I'm sorry.
That's the motion before the, before Mr. May's.
Sorry, it was a little long-winded, I got distracted. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you so much, council. On to item number four, discussion and possible action authorizing city manager to advertise for requests for qualifications for financial advisors.
No, I think we're going to now make a motion for the table to hear.
I'm sorry, you're right. We have to go back to the original motion, don't we, Mr. Schnell?
You withdrew your motion.
There was no original motion, mayor. I wasn't sure exactly what Ms. Winger's, what I think Ms. Winger said, that she want, her motion was to request that citizens who have made comments and any other citizens who have comments, to present them to the governing body in writing. That seemed to me to be what the motion was. I did not catch who did the second to that motion.
That's correct, but that didn't deal with whether we were going to vote tonight. That's what Mr. May's motion is going to do.
Mr. May's motion was withdrawn.
Yeah, that's irrelevant.
So, that Mr. May's motion is no longer active unless Mr. May or somebody else wants to make that motion.
Okay.
So, mayor, I think the appropriate thing to do at this point is to ask the governing body, is there any other motion under item number three on this agenda?
Is there any other motion under item number three? Okay, then we're going on to number four, discussion and possible action authorizing the city manager to advertise for requests for qualifications for a financial advisor. Mr. Rappley?
Thank you, mayor. I obviously submitted this with Councilman Gregory in regards to going out to receive RFQs for financial advisors. Obviously, if you look at our CIP, we have extensive projects that are needed, and we have to look at financing options, so it might be in the best interest for the city to obtain advisors to help us walk through that process for these projects with our engineers and myself and staff as we move forward, to see if we can find funding to take care of a large part of the street projects that require reconstruction or full depth.
Thank you, Ms. Rappley. Mr. Sanderson?
So, is this a prelude to starting a, for putting bonds on the election? Is this something for bonds as well, or is there any, is there a particular focus to what particular, for what particular financial activity is going to take place?
Well, there's different ways to borrow money to do projects, so this is sort of the preliminary, the preliminary step to get financial advisors to give us options to figure out what the terms of borrowing look like, or what type of borrowing, whether it's general obligation or certificates of obligation for cities to borrow to do projects of this magnitude. But this is sort of a basic step to acquire our financial advisors to help us walk through these steps. I'm not saying that right now that's leaning towards a bond project versus cities that borrow money through certificates of obligations to do capital projects. Again, this is something I discussed, and Mr. Gregory asked me as well to move forward with this. Mr. Gregory, you want to elaborate?
This is essential, essential for a small city to have a financial advisor, inasmuch as we are now dealing with substantially larger amounts of money flowing into the city, and the projects are going to be substantially larger. And rather than waste time just as we get to the precipice to understand what we're doing, I'm suggesting that we get a financial advisor, which in most instances does not cost anything unless it's used, and it'd be a good reference for the council, sort of a prep for the council to learn about these various things that the financial advisor could give to the city council. It's a very necessary thing.
Ms. Winger?
Well, that's, that was going to be my next question. I'm willing to do that as long as it's, there's no cost involved. I wouldn't, because that, it's true, financial advisors shouldn't actually charge. They make their money off what they recommend if it's accepted. So, if it's simply going to be to get somebody to give advice, and the city manager will bring that to us, and then we can determine what the cost will be, that's fine, but I don't want to spend any money in advance.
Would it be possible to make a modification to this particular entry or this agenda item, such that as long as it does not cost any money?
No, moved.
Okay. Discussion?
We've had this before in the past, about ten years ago, and at that time, we had, I believe it was Southwest Securities, has chosen as our financial advisor. At that time, she stated clearly what was the reality of the thing. The advice is there, and only you get the fee only when the advice is used with regard to a bond, or something that the council determines comes from the deus. And, you know, until the council determines to do something, generally speaking, fees aren't given. That's how it was a quarter few years ago. I'm assuming that's how it is now. I know how it is in my business, but generally speaking, this is, this is sort of like a lawyer. You only pay after the result, the jury is in your favor. So, it's a similar type of thing.
I see no particular harm then in making a proviso in that, in limiting them.
Mr. Esbrand?
Actually, Mr. Sanderson, I think my concern there would be that the potential action item is authorizing the city manager to advertise for requests for qualifications. Advertising does cost money, so I realize what the intention, I believe what the intention you had was, but if you were to put it in with that language, you're then, in effect, not allowing the city manager to advertise.
I do not mind changing mine to basically personal remuneration, or whatever the proper terminology would be, as opposed to just limiting it to no, no professional cost. And certainly, if it requires for the city to spend money on advertisement for the request, certainly we should do that within the nominal means there.
Great, thank you.
Are you amending your original motion?
I wish to amend it, yes.
Okay, Mr. Schnell, do we have to vote on the first motion?
Mayor, I think it'd be important for Mr. Rappley and me, neither of us whom, neither of us apparently understand what the motion is, to have whoever made the motion repeat the motion, so it will be clear, and then make sure that the person who seconded it is still willing to second it. On the merits of this subject, however, this is an RFQ. This is a process where the city says, we're interested in finding out who's interested and who's available to provide this service to the city, and on what basis. And the RFQ respondents, if the RFQ requests it, can respond specifically as to fees and when fees would be incurred or paid. You know, understanding that the council does not want to unnecessarily spend funds, I do think it's clear that financial advisors are ultimately going to get paid if the city takes any of their advice. And I think that to limit at this point, the request to only a financial advisor who will not charge a fee, may have a chilling effect on what responses the city receives. But I think to start with-
I'll go ahead and withdraw.
Okay.
To start with, it would be helpful, mayor, if we could have the motion repeated, so everyone knows what they're voting on.
So, Mr. Sanderson made a motion to ensure that there would be no cost associated, the original amendment?
So, basically, just in professional costs, the cost of the person, that's all. The, you know, I wasn't fully, you know, the RFQ part right there kind of confused me there. I wasn't sure whether we were actually authorizing to go ahead and actually, you know, say that we're going to have, you know, we're going to pay this kind of money or whatever, so, I'm sorry.
If I understand correctly, you're okay with it the way that it is, so at this point, you would, if you choose to do so, retract your previous amendments?
I choose to retract it, yes.
Ms. Winger, are you okay with that?
I'm sorry, what are we doing now?
He's going to retract his previous amendments, and we're going to start back off at the base item number four.
Well, yeah.
Are you okay with that, Ms. Winger?
All I'm saying is that-
Ms. Winger, I need to know if we can, if you're okay with that, and then we can proceed.
No, I would like to, I would like it to say that, and I wanted to comment further. I would like to say that we have not agreed outside of the cost of an advertisement, which isn't very much, to put out any money for a financial advisor in advance. Now, based on what Mr. Schnell said, most RFQs, and this one may be different, but most RFQs actually state what you're going to pay. In other words, there's a range. So, if we're not saying that, then, you know, that's fine, but we should not be agreeing to anything in advance when we don't know the cost.
Okay, thank you so much. So, Mr. Sanderson retracted his original amendments. You had seconded them. Are you okay retracting that as well, Ms. Winger?
I'm sorry?
Mr. Sanderson retracted his amendments. Are you okay with that as you seconded it?
No, I'm not. I just said that. I don't want to have something posted that states that we're going to pay for it when we don't know what it's going to cost.
Okay, so I'm assuming we have to vote at this point, Mr. Schnell?
Again, what are we voting on? What is the council voting on? Because if Mr. Sanderson's original motion was to authorize the city manager to advertise for requests of qualifications for financial advisors, provided that there will be no professional costs incurred, that would be the motion. That's the motion I thought he was making when he repeated the statement, provided that, or ensure that no professional costs are involved. And there would not ordinarily be any professional costs involved, or expense involved to the city, to the professional for responding to an RFQ. Some RFQs specifically say that, that the requesting party is not going to reimburse any respondent for any costs associated with their response. But the request for qualifications typically is a request for someone to tell the requesting agency, this is why I am the best qualified person to provide the service you are looking for, and if the requesting party further asks for a fee structure, would then provide their fee structure, and then it would come back to the governing body after being evaluated by either the city manager or a committee appointed either by the mayor or the council or the city manager, and make a recommendation. And only at that point would a contract be entered into with a financial advisor in this scenario.
Mr. Sanderson, would you like to clarify?
Yes, sir. I think actually you hit it right on the head, and I do not remember precisely what you said, but if you rewind about a minute ago, basically, you stated something to the effect that we're not going to be paying any money as a part of responding to the RFQ. That, I believe, is a good addition.
And my only concern, I did have my hand, is that the word ordinarily keeps being mentioned, both by Mr. Gregory and by Mr. Schnell. Well, something that's ordinarily isn't necessarily a fact, so I would like to make sure that there's no misunderstanding, that we're agreeing to pay something in advance because we don't know what we're getting yet.
I would like to go ahead and modify my, to what Mr. Schnell said, and I think that it is, it is applicable in this situation.
Okay, so-
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Gregory, by all means, please.
This is my motion, so I would like to talk about it for a minute. This is simply the same thing we've gone through when we get lawyers. Lawyers that say this is why we're good, this is our fee schedule. Same thing. This is not complicated. That's why it's just clear, we're going after an RFQ for a financial advisor, it's up to the financial advisor, they'll decide what they're going to charge, and under what circumstances. And that's all there is. We, the law firms that came before us when they applied to be city attorneys, didn't charge us for their 20-minute presentations, but this is simply to get an RFQ in front of our eyes, to see what these people say they're going to do, and what it would cost if we chose them. So, it's, I move, I move this motion again to authorize the city manager to advertise a request for qualifications for financial advisors, period.
Okay, so we have an original amendment, or Mr. Sanderson's amendment on the table. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, the amendment fails. We're back to the original. Do we have a motion? Okay, so you're going to go with the original as written, Mr. Gregory?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, by Mr. Gregory, do we have a second?
Mr. Mayor, second.
Second by Mr. May. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much, council. Item number five, discussion and possible action approving resolution 2019-12-10, a resolution of the City of Castle Hill City Council authorizing the city treasurer and his designees to establish accounts or memberships at banks or credit unions or investment pools for the purposes of investing and purchasing certificates of deposit. Mr. Gregory?
This is basically to take off the names of people who were doing this in the past, namely the former mayor, and to reestablish the names as the current mayor, our finance director, and myself. This is simply a housekeeping thing of updating the names of those authorized.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I propose that the city council approve resolution 2019-12-10 as stated.
Thank you, Mr. May.
Second.
Second by Ms. Winger. Do we have a discussion? All in favor? Unanimat, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I got so excited to go fast that I forgot if there was anybody signed up. Ms. Scott, please.
Marissa Scott, 207 Prince Drive. Mr. Gregory, I think you already answered this question. I know you're not allowed to address me, so I'm going to ask Mr. Rappley this. I just wanted to clarify, the designees, we're just changing names on the bank accounts, correct, to have the proper people able to sign checks? That's how I understood. Mr. Gregory, explain this item.
This is in relation to our investment pool. We have certain credit unions and banks where we have investment in it. Right now, it has the former mayor's name on it, and so we're just updating to the current mayor. It already included Councilman Gregory, and we're adding Ms. Fegans as the finance director as well.
I think that answered my second question, who the designees were, because they weren't named specifically. So, who are the designees that would be working with Mr.? They are named?
It's outlined in the, Ms. Scott outlined in the resolution.
Their name in the resolution?
With Mr. Gregory as city treasurer, and Mayor Trevino and Laura Fegans as finance director.
Okay, in the resolution itself. My apologies for not reading the resolution in its completion. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Okay, all in favor?
Can I ask just one thing? I don't know if it's important or not, but there's actually a typo in that resolution that makes in the third whereas a possessive of designee's possession. I believe that needs to be his designees. Is that correct? It reads, whereas the Douglas Gregory, the city treasurer, and his designees need- It reads, "Whereas the Douglas Gregory, the city treasurer, and his designees need..." I think it's, what it mean, what it's intended to say is, "Mr. Gregory, the city treasurer, and his designee need to execute documents." Is that a correct intention there, Mr. Gregory?
Oh, an E? You want to take it?
Mr. Gregory, can you use your microphone?
Doesn't have his name in here.
Can you use your microphone? I couldn't hear you.
Yes, I agree. Just remove the T-A-Z.
So it would be to strike the word in the third, whereas, the...
That's correct.
And to turn, designee, it should be plural, not plural possessive, designees, Mr. Gregory and his designees need to.
You're saying S apostrophe.
I'm sorry, sir.
You're saying S apostrophe. As opposed to apostrophe, yes.
Okay, so... I just didn't know if that was important in actually executing this, if...
Mr. Schnall, do we need to make an amendment for that? Just a clerical issue?
The sentence that Mr. Isbrand is referring to, all of his corrections are perfectly appropriate, but the actual action item is the paragraph beginning now therefore. So I think that what Mr. Isbrand can do and the council can agree to is to simply instruct the Scrivener to make those corrections in the final version of the ordinance, of the resolution. If there had been a change in the now therefore paragraph, that should be done by amendment.
Okay, perfect. All in favor?
I just want to clarify one thing. There should be no apostrophe, period. He moved an apostrophe. There's no reason for an apostrophe grammatically.
I thought Mr. Isbrand said to remove the apostrophe entirely. Mr. Isbrand?
Well, that's not what I heard.
So, okay, so doing this isn't easy. Whereas Douglas Gregory, comma, the city treasurer, comma, and his designees, his multiple designees, no comma, need to execute documents to accomplish this purpose and perform transactions.
No apostrophe, correct?
No apostrophe.
That's correct.
Correct.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you so much, council. Let's see here. Item number six, discussion and possible action on directing the zoning commission to review and recommend changes to the method on the appointment process under section 50-589 of chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances. Mr. Isbrand, Mr. Gregory, which one of y'all would like to take the lead?
Mayor and council, at the last council meeting, Mr. Gregory proposed a couple of ordinances that we then modified with the intention of ensuring that with the Architectural Review Committee and the Board of Adjustment, that representation was based on one representative for each council member. And the structure that we put in there, the mayor would then select the chair from those appointees, and we had a process for establishing how alternates would be selected as well. So we've taken care of two of the three committees or commissions or boards that we have here. We have not addressed the same thing for the zoning commission. I believe that it would be beneficial both to the city now and future city councils and to the residents of the community that we have a consistent process for doing this across all our boards, commissions, and committees. So my request here and the motion that I would make would be to direct the zoning commission to can, to review and consider recommended changes to the method of appointment under section 50-589 of chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances and to present a recommendation to the city council by, at its February 2020 meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Ms. Winger?
Yeah, does it, so you're speaking specifically about appointments to the zoning commission, which is already established.
Yes, ma'am.
We're not changing that.
This would be a recommendation for future appointments.
Okay, but, but we didn't change anything to the zoning commission.
Well, and Ms. Winger, if I may, Mr. Isbrand, I think what he's saying is...
The method of appointment to the zoning commission is decided by law.
I think what Mr. Isbrand is saying is that he would like to make them consistent. Is that correct, Mr. Isbrand? Okay. Do we have any other discussion? Mr. May?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. May. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Winger?
I believe that the method of appointment of the zoning commission is by law, it's determined by the state of Texas. It's not determined by the zoning commission. Zoning commission is appointed by council.
Mr. Schnall, do you have anything there?
Yes. Okay. Trying to find exactly where this is. In the local government code. Section 211.007 of the Local Government Code, subpart A, says, "To exercise the powers authorized by this subchapter," which is the zoning subchapter in the Local Government Code, "the governing body of a home rule municipality shall and the governing body of a general law municipality may appoint a zoning commission." And basically, that is all the guidance that the Local Government Code has in regard to the selection or appointment of a zoning commission. The current zoning ordinance has, has a, has a provision, I think it is, as Mr. Isbrand said and as the agenda item says, section 50-589 says that the council shall appoint a zoning commission as prescribed by Vernon's Texas Code's annotated Local Government Code section 211.007. The city council shall appoint two alternate members who shall serve in the absence of one or more regular members. These alternate members shall serve for the same period as the regular members, and any vacancies shall be filled in the same manner. So that is what the current code says. That code was adopted in 1995 and modified in 2015. Mr. Isbrand's introductory comment was to the effect that the council has already, in, at the November council meeting, changed the methodology of appointment of members of the Board of Adjustment and the Architectural Review Committee. And I believe his suggestion, and Mr. Isbrand can clearly speak for himself, was that the zoning commission consider revising, recommending to the council that section 58-589 of the zoning code be modified to be consistent with the changes that the council made to the methodology for the appointment of the Board of Adjustment and the Architectural Review Committee at the meeting on November 19th.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall. I realize we have two people signed up to speak. Mr. McCormick?
Clyde McCormick, 207 Carrollwood. I agree with, with Mr. Isbrand that this is an appropriate request to make of the zoning commission, that the zoning commission make a recommendation as to how they would have the zoning ordinance revised, if that's to be done. I also recommend that we set a deadline for that. Mr. Isbrand suggested February 2020, the council meeting in February 2020. I would like to add a provision, my suggestion, that we provide in our decision, in the council's decision, that absent a written recommendation, it would be deemed a response in opposition to any changes to the zoning code, rather than to have to require a written response from the zoning board or the zoning commission as to a recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Brother Dooling?
Brother William Dooling, 201 Gladiola Lane. The, the question I have is, I guess it's merely not what y'all are talking about exactly, but it is, and I've said this before, it's extremely difficult for those of us who do not have a packet sitting in front of them with what you're talking about. I just called this up on my phone, I mean, while you were talking, and for item number six, it is blank. There's nothing there. Likewise, there's nothing on number seven. So there's no way to follow what you're talking about as the words are flying around, and you can't remember all that stuff. You all can't even remember your motion, let alone who made it. So I'm just pleading with whomever will listen to somehow get us, we invest in stuff and don't use it. These items ought to be on that screen at all times so that we can follow what you're looking at in front of you. I sometimes just think it's very disrespectful. Plus, the people sitting at home, which nowadays seems to be the majority of people interested, have absolutely nothing to follow. So, you know, it's, I begged and pleaded for one packet to be left on the table back there so that the nerds like myself can go back there and actually look at it and see what you're talking about. Short of that, I really demand that you use the technology that we've invested in. Or at least put a screen somewhere that's just like your screen so we can see, well, I guess you don't have screens. Well, you should. That's all I'm saying. It's just, it's so difficult to know. I mean, I do want to say though about the zoning commissions just very quickly. My partner in crime, Ms. Jaffet, and I, along with Mr. Schnall, were on a zoning review committee that was not mentioned in your earlier conversations. It was after 96 and before 2016, which took three years. So I just would like to thank those that are doing this work. I know Mark remembers it well. Perry Burnham was the chairman of that committee. It's extremely difficult and hard to follow and hard to make sense. I would second what Mr. Isbrand said. We ought to get a professional. You know, it, there's no way anybody can really figure all this stuff out unless you do it on a full-time basis, instead of citizens with good intentions, but forget this cancels that and so on. Thank you.
Thank you, Brother Dooling.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Winger?
So now I understand what you want to do, and I think that the way that this is written, after the word appointment process, we need to add of members to the zoning commission because that's not clear. I thought we were talking about everything we had just voted on. Okay? If we just add that?
I would accept that as a friendly amendment. Yes, ma'am.
And I will second it.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment? Okay. We have a first and a second on the amendment. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. And now we're back to the original motion. All in favor? Unanimous again. Thank you so much, council. Moving on to item number seven, discussion and possible action on an appointment to the zoning commission. Mr. Isbrand?
So, Mayor and council, when Mr. McCormick held the seat, he had a nominee when you all went through the appointment process or a, an opportunity to make a nomination for an appointment which was not made or accepted by the city council. So we still have one vacancy that remains open on the zoning commission, which arguably should have come from the place one council member, so that we can have a full commission serve. I would like to make a motion tonight that we make an appointment to the zoning commission, and I would like to move that we appoint John Herndon to that position. Mr. Herndon is currently serving as an alternate on the zoning commission. He was appointed at your June meeting last year and selected unanimously. He has served, and I believe, four of the last six meetings, has held the seat, and has demonstrated his commitment and interest in serving this community in that role. So I would ask for your support of Mr. Herndon as, for that appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Sanderson. Ms. Winger?
Is he willing to serve as a permanent member?
Yes, ma'am, he is.
Very good.
Any other discussion? Mr. Gregory?
Does this require a vote?
Yes.
I believe it does.
I made the motion, and it was seconded.
Do we have any other discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you so much, Mr. Herndon, for willing to serve. Item number eight, discussion and possible action on the reappointment of Harold T. McCall to municipal court judge for the City of Castle Hills. Mr. Rappley?
Mayor, I'm just bringing this forward for the council's review and appointment, reappointment for the municipal court judge that's required at this time.
Okay.
Judge is here, if you'd like to ask him questions as well.
Ms. Winger?
Yeah. I would like to see us put out RFQs. I guess that's what we want, because we haven't done that for some time, and Mr. McCall has been here for quite a long time. And there's actually, according to what you told us, this isn't the time of year when we should be doing this anyway, but as long as we are, I would like us to put out RFQs and see who else is out there, and I would like to have them posted both on our website and on the TML website.
I'll second that.
I'm afraid the agenda does not give the council the opportunity to take action on an RFQ. The only thing we told the public on the agenda was, in item eight, to discuss and take possible action on the reappointment of Judge McCall.
Okay, well, since...
So, so the appropriate thing to do would either to be take action to reappoint Judge McCall or not take action to do so.
So I would like to pull this item.
Okay, well, we have citizens to be heard, Ms. Winger. I believe Mr. McCormick, did you sign up for this one? I can't tell if that's a seven or an eight.
Clyde McCormick, 207 Carrollwood. While on council, I had the opportunity to review the performance of Judge McCall as a municipal judge. I've had an opportunity to look at his budgeting. I've had an opportunity to visit court and to look at the organization of the court, and I've had the opportunity to look at the outcomes that we receive by way of revenue from the court. I have to say that my opinion is that Judge McCall has done an exemplary job of organizing the court. We have had consistently superior returns as far as revenue is concerned from the court, and my understanding is that the, the opinions of the, of the public who deal with Judge McCall are quite favorable. I'd be real surprised if we were able to find somebody with similar qualifications who would perform nearly so well for anywhere near the price that we're getting Judge McCall. I recommend that the council approve reappointment of Judge McCall as municipal judge for Castle Hills.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Next, we have Ms. Patsy Martin.
Patsy Martin, 223 Glen Tower. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you tonight. I just wanted to talk with you a moment about the fact that I've been a volunteer in the court for approximately five years, and I come twice a month at least, and I have firsthand knowledge, I think, of, of what goes on in our court. So I'd like to just say that in, in the time that I've been here, I've seen firsthand that the court is much more efficient than it has been in the past. I was told by a previous court employee that sometimes court would last until eight or nine o'clock at night. Now we rarely run past six, and that is very rare. Judge McCall was responsible for making our court a court of record. That gives us far more control over our own cases. Before we became a court of record, a defendant that didn't like working with our court or judge was able to file an appeal at county court. That would result in Castle Hills not getting any fines or revenue. Our court now brings in a substantial amount of money each month, and appeals have virtually stopped except for a few random exceptions. Another thing I've witnessed is that attorneys representing clients in our court are treated with utmost respect. They are serviced by the prosecutors and the judge as soon as they arrive. Many of them have commented to me on how well they are treated in our court and how appreciative they are for the fact that we are respectful of their time. In addition to the attorneys being treated respectfully, Judge McCall treats each defendant with courtesy and respect and fairness. I'm oftentimes delivering paperwork to him, and I hear those conversations that he has with our defendants. I've always been very impressed with him. I've always been very impressed with him in this respect. When a defendant walks out of our court after having to pay a fine, and they stop at our table on the way out and say, "Thank you," you know that something right is being done. In my opinion, Judge McCall respects the law and adheres to it. He is a true professional, and for these reasons, I hope you will renew his contract with Castle Hills. I consider us to be very fortunate to have a man of his character and legal expertise as part of our city, and I'd hate to lose someone of this quality. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Ms. Winger.
I know that Mrs. Martin has volunteered her time as have other people, and of course, that's always very much appreciated. I can tell you that I get constant complaints by the delays in the way that people are being treated in court. I don't know whose fault it is, but I think that it's time that we look at least around to see if there's any other possibility of other people because I don't hear those complaints from other cities. I've checked with Alamo Heights and Chavino Park, and they are not having those kind of complaints. I'm getting them all the time, and I think we should respond to the complaints that have been made by the citizens.
Ms. Winger, just to confirm, you have people that come through our court, come to you directly and complain?
Yes, that it's just totally disorganized. Nobody knows what's going on. Mr. Henry, when he was here, confirmed that to me. So, I know that Mrs. Martin's sitting in the back of the room, and what her perception is, you know, I'm not saying that she's wrong. I'm just saying, I've just had numerous complaints, and they continue, and I think it's time for us to take a look and see who else is out there. We shouldn't keep on, you know, bringing the same people over and over and over again if there's other opportunities.
Okay, thank you. Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I absolutely do not want to pass on this tonight for several reasons. Number one, rebuilding the credibility of this city is based on consistency, and by having constant turmoil and turnover is not helping that process.
This is constant.
This is my time, Ms. Mayor. The other reason is because I've made my own inquiries, and I'm tired of these amorphous broadsides on people claiming, who are these people? This is not a court of law, and it wouldn't pass muster if it was a court of law to just simply throw out, there are people that are dissatisfied. I've made my own discreet inquiry, and what I've found is, this is an honorable person who makes good judgments and runs this court very efficiently. So, with that, I am moving that this council authorize the reapportment of Harold T. McCall as our municipal court judge.
Second.
We have a second? Do we have discussion?
Discussion, yes.
Mr. Gregory.
I voted for this gentleman when he came the last time, and this is the first, only the second time that I've had people call me praising the sitting judge, the other judge, Brother Dooling. And we didn't go out for RFQs for him after a while because he showed his worth. I think this judge has shown his mettle as to exactly what type of jurist he is, and I wholeheartedly recommend him again.
Mr. Sanderson.
Just to Curtis' point, I don't really see how giving RFQs and seeing who else out there willing to go and provide this service is a sign of turmoil. I believe that's a normal operation of a city to go ahead and try to find the best qualified folks and to always keep their options open. I see little or no harm in at least asking.
With that said, do we... All in favor? All opposed? Judge McCall will be appointed three to two. Thank you so much, counsel. Item number nine, discussion and possible action on request by co-plaintiff Leslie Winger for copies of itemized invoices for legal services rendered on behalf of the city in Sylvia Gonzalez, Leslie Winger, and Mark Sanderson versus the city of Castle Hills at all, cause number 2019 CI-14505, possible executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071. Mr. Schnall.
Mayor, the request by a adverse party in litigation to see information which may be, or may include attorney-client privileged information is, in my judgment, inappropriate. I'm glad to explore that more in an executive session with the members of the governing body. I have a proposed motion if members of the governing body would like to go into that executive session or feel a need to do so. It is worded similar to the motion that was presented at last month's meeting in regard to a similar, well, to a different agenda item, but also related to the Gonzalez-Winger-Sanderson versus city of Castle Hills at all lawsuit. However, if there are citizens who have signed up to be heard, it may be appropriate to begin this agenda item by hearing from any citizens who have signed up.
Item number nine, we have Mr. McCormick.
Clyde McCormick, 207 Carrollwood. I've had the opportunity to look into this matter to some degree, and it's clear that detailed attorney fee bills are privileged attorney-client information and certainly may include information which is detrimental to the interest of the person represented by the attorney in this case, the city. When Ms. Winger and Mr. Sanderson and Ms. Gonzalez sued the city of Castle Hills, they became adverse parties. Both the attorney-client privilege with regard to this information and the stenance of Ms. Gonzalez, Ms. Winger, and Mr. Sanderson as adverse parties survive the lawsuit. Even though the lawsuit has been dropped or non-sued by the plaintiffs, the relationship is still there, and the risk to the defendants, in this case, the city of Castle Hills, is significant. It's inappropriate for the attorney to simply give up and turn over the information which may include attorney-client privileged information detrimental to the city, to adverse parties in the lawsuit. I think that will be the decision of the Attorney General if the matter is brought to his attention. I think it should be the decision of our council tonight, and that we should not begin to consider providing confidential information that passes between the attorney and his client to adverse parties. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick.
May I speak?
Ms. Winger, we still have people signed up to speak. Brother William Dooling.
Brother William Dooling, 201 Gladiola Lane. Again, I signed up for this because on the download that I made this afternoon on December 10th, it's blank. So, any rate, and I echo 100% what Mr. McCormick said, and I would just offer my own view. I wasn't sure who had made the request or whether it came from a lawyer, but I mean, as an attorney, any such request like that has to go through the discovery process, to which there are protections and requirements and do's and don'ts and road signs and all of that. You just don't go around gathering up information. Well, you can go around, but you're not going to get it unless your attorney, or if you're representing yourself, attorney pro se, goes through the required, under the Texas rules of procedure, through the discovery process. And I'm sure Mr. May would agree with me on that, and Mr. Schnall. So, I mean, I'm just saying that there's no way that information is subject to this kind of request. And if the lawsuit is gone, then it has to be revived. Some person representing somebody, either themselves or an attorney representing, has to make the official requests under Rule 194. Thank you.
Thank you, Brother Dooling. Dr. Flynn.
Dr. Mike Flynn, 111 Amerson. Seems to me like the attorneys, these legal minds that have spoken before me have covered all the bases. This is just simply theater of the absurd. You know, I won't rehash how we got here, but there's clearly a conflict of interest between what has happened and Mr. Sanderson and Ms. Winger's request, and I would urge this council to vote no on their resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flynn. Okay, we've exhausted everybody. Any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Winger.
I'm not asking for confidential information. It's my understanding that these are bills that were submitted to the city, which means the taxpayers are paying for it, and they have a right to know where the money went. That's why I asked for it, not to get confidential information.
Thank you, Ms. Winger. Mr. Sanderson.
A quick question that I have for Mr. Schnall. Are all detailed bills from the time that your law firm started working for this city considered, in your opinion, to be confidential?
To the extent your question is germane to this agenda item, there are probably parts of virtually every bill for legal services rendered to the city of Castle Hills since September of 2018 which contain confidential attorney-client information. Not all of the bills, not the cover page that has the amounts, for example, that would not be privileged, but the detail, there are certainly some detailed entries probably on every invoice we've submitted to the city that contain information that if released to the public would be jeopardizing the privileged and confidential nature of the representation. That's just sometimes inevitable. My practice has been to let my client know what I've done because my experience is that if you write a bill to a client that says, "Worked on your case 14 hours," that doesn't really tell the client anything, and so I generally do not bill that way. The request to see itemized bills gave no discretion to the idea of confidentiality. There is a way to, you know, have a determination made about what is or what isn't confidential, but the request the city received in regard to this matter, which is also in part the subject of item number 10, was not limited. It was that Ms. Winger asked for copies of the itemized invoices in relation to the legal work done by my law firm in the matter of the litigation where Ms. Gonzalez, Ms. Winger, and Mr. Sanderson sued the city of Castle Hills. And in my judgment, and Mr. McCormick said it perhaps more eloquently, it is not appropriate to simply give that information out to the extent that it may contain privileged and confidential attorney-client information about the specifics of the legal theories or other matters that were considered in order to defend that lawsuit. I don't think that the fact that the lawsuit was dismissed or non-sued without prejudice changes that. I think Mr. McCormick also indicated that in his comments. And I hope that gives the council enough information to make an informed judgment on this agenda item. If there is an interest in going to an executive session, I will pass out a proposed motion to that effect.
Mr. Isbrand.
Mr. Mayor, I would move a motion that we decline the request of co-plaintiff Leslie Winger for copies of itemized invoices for legal services rendered on behalf of the city in Sylvia Gonzalez, Leslie Winger, and Mark Sanderson versus city of Castle Hills. And I would personally urge any plaintiff in this party to recuse themselves from that vote.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand.
Second.
Second by Mr. May. Discussion? Mr. May.
Again, I'm not asking for any theories or confidential information. This should be public information if the taxpayers are paying for it. They should be able to have an itemized bill, not theories, not anything other than what the time was spent on, as Mr. Schnall indicated that he does. I will get to the other item when we get to it, but this, since this was put first, we're discussing this first.
Mr. May's return, please.
Mr. Mayor, I think it needs to be said, the citizens of this city, the city of Castle Hills, deserve not to be sued by their elected representatives, and I am a firm no. There is absolutely no right under the law that I'm aware of that would give the plaintiffs that kind of discovery. So, whether we vote now or in 10 minutes more of litigation, it's a firm no for me.
Thank you so much, Mr. May. Any other comments? All in favor?
What is the...
Yes, sir, I'm calling for...
What are we voting on, please?
We're voting on Mr. Isbrand's motion. All in favor? All opposed? Abstaining? Mr. Isbrand's motion passes three to zero to two. Let's see here. Item number 10, review and discuss the backup information or lack thereof for agenda items number eight and nine from November 19, 2019, city council meeting. City council meeting agenda. Ms. Winger, Mr. Sanderson. Ms. Winger, Mr. Sanderson.
Yes. So, this is what I received, which is basically no information at all. Now, the city attorney is hired by council, not by the city manager, and it's up to the city council to determine if the money is being properly spent on behalf of the taxpayers. And we know nothing here. Every single month, we have, you know, $6,000, $13,000. It doesn't say what was done. That is not the kind of attorney's bill that I'm used to reviewing either on this council or, you know, on bare met. We always got detailed bills that said exactly what was done, how much time was spent, if somebody talked to somebody. You don't have to go into what they talked to. Nobody cares about that. That is attorney-client privilege. But you say, "Have discussion with such and such person, six minutes. Have discussion with such and such person, 10 minutes. Went to court, did such and such, how many hours?" That's what the bill should say. This bill, this is nothing. There's nothing here except one flat figure. And as Mr. Rappley pointed out to me, we previously had an arrangement with Mr. Brennan where he simply charged $2,000 a month. Well, under those circumstances, he did not have to back it up. But I asked for all legal bills, not just Langley and Bernack. We have other people that we've employed here, and I would like to see all of the legal bills because we were asked to vote for a budget amendment to cover it, and I want to see what we're talking about, and we should have been getting this all along, and we should be getting this on a monthly basis in our packets showing us what we're being charged for.
Thank you, Ms. Winger. Mr. Isbrand.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, I fully appreciate the desire to have transparency in the way that the city's tax dollars are being spent. I think we all recognize that this is an extreme situation that we are in because of the amount of litigation that the city is associated with that involves plaintiffs who sit on this city council. If those lawsuits were not active against the city, I'm pretty confident in saying the stack of bills would probably be a lot less to begin with. But given those extreme circumstances, I have the utmost of confidence that the city attorney, the city manager, and the mayor reviewing our legal representation costs right now is more than adequate until we have resolved these outstanding legal issues.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand.
Again, take that out of there if that's your issue, but we're going back to September of last year, Mr. Isbrand. We're not talking about the litigation. And for the record, the reason that the litigation was brought was because the city didn't handle the matter properly. If the city had handled the matter properly, there would have been no litigation. Somebody had to stand up for the voters, and the city refused to do it. So, we're no longer talking about that. We're talking about legal bills that we get on a monthly basis that have nothing to do with that. Take that matter out of here. Starting back in September, when Mr. Schnall started working for the city, he and Mr. Fletcher have been billing the city for things that had nothing to do with that. Okay? That's a very recent occurrence, and that's what I'm asking for. I want to know what we're being billed for. There are other attorneys. We had bills from Ryan Henry when he was here. That's part of the legal bills. We had bills from a prior employment law attorney, Mr. Holland. That all should be in here. We should know what our legal expenses are and not have to simply see a bill from Mr. Schnall who doesn't cover all of the legal expenses. He only has to deal with the ones from his firm.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Winger. Mr. Rapley, I have you. Mr. Isbrand, please.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Winger. I appreciate that this action item refers to, or this item on the agenda refers to November 19, council backup. I didn't see in those items, and I apologize if I missed it, that that item last month referred to bills going back to last September. So perhaps I missed something there. But I do want to suggest that to argue that you're standing up for the voters by asking for these bills at a time that you have active litigation against the city makes it very hard for those of us who would like to advocate for transparency to want to do so, knowing the potential danger that it puts this city in as this goes forward. Again, I would say I'm highly confident that we have checks and balance system in place by the review of the mayor and the city manager of these bills that is adequate until these outstanding issues are resolved. And if it is that important that we have this transparency, perhaps dropping those lawsuits so that we can get back to doing the regular business of the city would be the appropriate way to go about addressing this so that we could share publicly each and every itemized bill that we receive from the city attorney.
The lawsuit was dropped.
Ms. Winger, I think what Mr. Isbrand's getting to is that the lawsuit was not dropped with prejudice in that it can still be revived. Mr. Schnall, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you so much.
This lawsuit could not be revived necessarily, but the same lawsuit could be filed again. And the dismissal without prejudice leaves open the possibility that the city could be sued again over the same issues.
So, Ms. Winger, what we're trying to get at is it's our intent to protect the city in the event that another form of litigation was to be opened.
Well, first of all, if you look at the last thing that was filed, Mr. Sanderson and I were taken off of it, so we no longer have any control over that. And I don't think we ever did, and I don't know what we were doing there in the first place, but this is not up to us. The point, the point is, take that issue out of it, if that's an issue at the present time, and some attorney can deal with it, as has been suggested. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about going back to September and all of the legal bills, which I described to Mr. Rapley in three emails that we went back and forth on. So it's not a question of simply asking for that information. It's asking for the legal bills that go back to September of last year through the present, and I also said that I would like to see them going forward. There should be nothing else that has to do with any lawsuit, unless it's reopened. I guess we'll all find out about that, but I don't know that it's going to be. But the point is, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the standard legal bills. Starting in September, we have $6,641. It doesn't say what it's for, and it keeps going on like that. $13,377, all preceding the lawsuit. The lawsuit is very recent. None of this has anything to do with the lawsuit.
There's only a two-month period right here where I believe that there is...
Sanderson, if you can let Ms. Winger finish, please.
Mr. I'm sorry. I mean, I just don't really understand why all this, it's like, there's a two-month period there where there might be a conflict. Certainly, this could have been delivered without that two-month period, without all of this extra stuff going on here.
Thank you. Mr. Rapley, you had a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I just wanted to make a point that last year, I budgeted $90,000 for Mr. Schnall's firm based on the selection by city council, and the idea of his firm being in roughly $7,000 a month. The first six months or so, the bill had been averaging around $7,000. In June, July, and August of this year, the month spiked, almost doubling and tripling close to $15,000 a month as a result of the need for legal review and opinion on matters which were presented to the city. Also during this time, individual council members contacted Mr. Schnall and met with him on numerous occasions, which allowed for an increase in general representation costs to the city. The month of October spiked due to over 30 open records requests submitted, which were partially required Mr. Schnall's review and engagement on these matters roughly $3,000 to $4,000 above the normal monthly billing amount. In reference to monthly financials, as I indicated to Ms. Winger in the email, the line item indicates the expense to date as far as attorney fees. In my research prior to my tenure, I contacted former employees who worked for the city as far back as 2010 to inquire and confirm if this was a standard practice. In reviewing previous agenda packets over the last five to six years, majority did not have backup related to anything, to any item, much less attorney fees. Mr. Brennan did have a contract with the city for a flat rate of $2,500 and would just invoice the city on a monthly basis with little or no detail.
That's correct.
Mr. Shaw's firm is contracted. This is not flat as per service. As a result, again, this is not a standard practice that has been in the agenda packets, nor has been since I've been city manager here. It's only in the monthly financials with expense to date.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Any further discussion? Mr. Gregory.
Mr. Schnall, Mark made the salient point. If this case would be reopened, it would behoove the city not to release this information until this case is put to bed and dead. If there's any way to revive this zombie, we would be in a bad position. Therefore, I agree with Mr. Schnall 100 percent.
We have a motion and a second, let me tell you.
This is a review and discussion. I'm not sure this is open to a motion.
That is correct. What I was going to point out, the agenda wording is review and discuss.
Right.
That's what's being done. There is, we have not told the public that there could be action taken, therefore it would be inappropriate for there to be a motion.
Mr. Isbrand, thank you for catching that. I apologize. We also do have two people signed up. Mr. McCormick?
Mayor, can I make a quick point? The Ryan Henry bills, I sent something out to council that shows expenses to date for his outside litigation, and most of the time, he's being appointed to TML. Holland and Holland was an expense in last year's budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Mr. McCormick?
Yes, Clyde McCormick, 207, Carrollwood. In reviewing the questions raised, the consideration of the council, just to restate this, review and discuss the backup information or lack thereof for agenda items eight and nine from November 19, 2019, council meeting agenda. I would point out for the benefit of the council that these items are moot. They were voted on and passed at the November 19 member, uh, meeting. There is nothing for council to consider with regard to those items at this point, so the discussion at this point is merely a rehash of the arguments made under item nine. I recommend that the council pass the item with no further action and no further discussion. Let's say I pass the item, meaning let it go by the boards, take no action.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Brother Dooling.
Brother William Dooling, 201, Gladiola Lane. And I just echo what Mr. McCormick just said. That was the reason I signed up, that agenda, these, the agenda items were from last month, and agenda item eight was the budget, and agenda item nine was the lawsuit. So obviously, we've already hashed that out. The information for agenda item, November 19, agenda item nine, it just can't be requested unless it's done through a proper legal process. And I agree with Mr. McCormick that the budget, that whole thing, and we all sat here painfully listening to it, was passed. The time to have made an objection to lack of information was at that time.
I did make an objection.
Ms. Winger, please. Brother Dooling, I'm sorry. Please proceed.
Sorry, I expected, I'll just gather my thoughts for a minute. I lost where I was at. At any rate, the best that can be said of this entire thing is that if you want to have some forward thing about some review of bills, but then I have to remind this council, and there are a lot of us that don't want to see those days return, that puts you in the position of micromanaging the city manager. That is not your job. You need to get out of that business and let the city manager manage the city. If he screws up on the legal bills, you'll kick him out. Fine. That's the process. But telling him what to do and how to present his work and to do his work is simply not your job. It's not that job in any city unless you have a strong mayor and council government. Thank you.
Thank you, Brother Dooling. Ms. Winger.
If you recall, I did raise this issue when we were asked to vote for the budget amendment, and you told me that I could have requested the information, and I said, "Well, then I'm requesting it right now." And I sent Mr. Rapley an email reminding him that I was requesting that information. So I, anybody has a right to see that. It is not correct what Mr. Dooling is saying. This matter, hiring the city attorney, hiring city engineers, is not the city manager's job. It is the council's job. That's what we do, and we have a fiduciary responsibility to know how that money is being spent. So that's why I'm asking for the information.
Thank you, Ms. Winger. Do we have a motion?
There is no motion.
Okay.
No motion, Mayor.
I would like to get the information. That's why I brought it up. I don't have it. And you, and you made the point publicly, Mr. Mayor, that I could have asked for it, so I'm asking for it. I don't have it.
Thank you, Ms. Winger.
Mr. Mayor, may we move? I believe we have completed the intent of item 10, which is review and discuss this. Can we move on?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Item number 11, discussion of possible action declared December. Actually, Mr. Rapley, is it okay for us to dismiss the department heads? I don't know if we have any information, no need to keep them here.
Yeah, no, they can, I'll go ahead and dismiss them. It's fine, Mayor.
Thank you. Item number 11, discussion of possible action declared December 24 a city holiday and authorize the city manager to close city hall. Mr. Rapley?
Yes, Mayor. I was doing some research, and obviously Christmas Eve falls on a, excuse me, on a Tuesday, and in researching other cities, federal and state, all employees have off for Christmas Eve. I had a number of staff that were going to be out today, so I thought it was in the best interest just to make that a city holiday, obviously just for this year. I'm not changing it or requesting a change for future, just particularly for this day in conjunction with Christmas this year.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we authorize the city manager to, that we declare December 24, 2019, a city holiday and authorize the city manager to close city hall.
Second.
Second by Mr. May. Do we have any discussion?
I have one question. How much does this cost?
Go ahead, Laura.
There would be no difference short of electricity and people not here. You're still going to pay whether they're here or that it's a holiday. They still get paid.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, well, we'll wait for Ms. Winger so we can take the vote.
By the way, the stock exchanges are open.
What was that, sir?
The stock exchanges are open on Christmas Eve. Made good money on those. I've made good money on...
Ms. Winger, we are, we're waiting for you to vote. We have a motion by Mr. Isbrand and a second by Mr. May to approve December 24 as a holiday for this year.
Oh, you didn't vote on it yet?
No, ma'am. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you so much, council. Item number 12, discussion of possible action on civil action number five, five colon one nine dash C V dash one three eight two, Wayside Chapel Evangelical Free Church versus City of Castle Hills and Chairman of the Zoning Commission, Joseph Michael Rodriguez. Mr. Schnall?
Mayor, I think that most people may have already heard about this, and certainly, although I was not able to be at the October 8 city council meeting, it's my understanding that the lawyer for Wayside Chapel indicated that if their request for a special use permit to use a house on Ivywood Circle for church purposes was unsuccessful, that litigation was likely to happen. Litigation was filed, I believe it was filed last Thursday or sometime last week, and the city was served by the serving of citation on the city manager on Thursday, and I believe Mr. Rodriguez was served by a service of citation on Friday of last week. The city manager submitted the 20-plus-page petition to the Intergovernmental Risk Pool at the Texas Municipal League. I believe that was done either Thursday or Friday of last week. And it's my understanding that the city received notification in writing today, sometime this afternoon, that the Intergovernmental Risk Pool of the Texas Municipal League had assigned a defend, an attorney to defend the city, and I believe Mr. Rodriguez as well, in the litigation. And the attorney that the Texas Municipal League did designate to, or request, represent the City of Castle Hills and its officials in this case was Mr. Lowell Denton of Denton, Navarro, Rocha, Bernal, and Zech. That, that just happened. I don't know, and Mr. Rapley can tell us whether he has heard from Mr. Denton since this letter was, was received. I'm not sure there's really any action to be taken tonight. What would be appropriate, of course, would be for the city manager and whoever he believes can provide relevant information to confer with the attorney, once the attorney accepts the representation, and provides a plan. Ultimately, this will come back for, to the governing body, probably with an executive session under section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to consult with the attorney for the city in regard to, you know, how the city would respond to this lawsuit. That's really about all that it probably can be said if you want. I believe I do have a copy of the pleading and can summarize some of the requests from Wayside Church, Wayside Chapel. Those are of a public record. The pleadings in a federal lawsuit are available through an online database called PACER, P-A-C-E-R. It does require a sign-up, and there is a small fee to get copies through that service. Or someone interested, a member of the public interested in seeing a copy of the petition can request it from city hall, and it would be considered an open records or public information request, and the city would provide a copy of the petition upon payment of appropriate fees.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall.
So nothing to act on at this time?
No, ma'am, not unless anybody has any questions.
Nope. Good news.
Okay, thank you. Actually, Mr. Schnall, I do have a question. Would council have to approve the deductible for the legal bills, or is that not something that council would approve?
I think when the council, through the budget process, approves the obtaining of the insurance, that is basically implicit authority for the city manager to spend the money necessary to invoke the insurance and continue the insurance coverage. And, you know, it certainly is something that... And, you know, it certainly is something that the council could act on if there was deemed to be a need for that. At this point, it just happened so recently that we really haven't had time to discuss that aspect of it. But because the city council in adopting the budget with the expense for the insurance coverage, I think that is implied authority for the city manager to see that whatever costs are necessary to be paid under that coverage are paid. We don't want to jeopardize the coverage through non-payment.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall. Item Number 13, discussion and possible action to appoint/reappoint for one member to the Ad-Hoc Project Committee to fill vacant position to be appointed by Councilmember Leslie Winger. Mr. Gregory?
The Ad-Hoc Committee met last Saturday, and they feel they need this vacancy to be filled. I agree. And if Mrs. Winger chooses... Does Mrs. Winger believe she has already chosen somebody?
I have been talking to people, and I have not found anybody as of this date that's interested in being on, but I will like to table this until the next meeting so that I can continue to look.
I will... This is a vacant spot for some time. We can defer to Mrs. Winger if so desired. The committee would like to fill the slot. I will leave it up to the council to determine what they want to do.
If that was a motion, I'll go ahead and second it.
Ms. Winger, was that a motion?
Yes, I said move to table.
We have a motion to table, second by Mr. Sanderson. All in favor? All... It's motion to table, all... So opposed? Abstained? Okay, so...
This is tabled. To what date certain?
Next meeting.
Next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, so motion to table to next meeting. It's four with one.
Actually, if that's part of the motion till next meeting, then I'll...
Yes, yes.
Okay, unanimous then. Thank you, Mr. Isbrand, for the clarification. Item Number 14, consider an act on appointments to the Architectural Review Committee. Ms. Winger?
Yes, I think we determined at the last meeting what methodology we're using. Am I correct?
That would be my understanding based on the ordinance that was passed.
Everybody on council is going to make an appointment, and then we're all going to vote on the alternates. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, go ahead. You're first.
Mr. May, yes, sir.
Yes, and this is instructive. Ms. Winger made a motion to table on the other matter, and I think it's appropriate we do the same in Items 14 and 15 for this reason. At least one member of the community has reached out to me. They're interested in one, or actually, both of the ones that are left to be decided. However, we don't have interest in the Ad-Hoc Committee. I would say that it's probably in our best interest and the interest of the city as a whole that we gather up all of those people that are interested, bring in the pertinent information so that we can make sure that we have solicited everyone that wants to be involved and make a sound decision. Some of these appointments are for two years, and I think that's a better procedure.
Well, if you're not ready, I'm willing to accept that, but I have spoken to people about Architect Review and Board of Adjustment, so I do have names for that. But if you're not ready, I will accept your...
I've got folks as well, too.
Mr. Gregory, you had a comment?
It was emerged, 14 and 15. I'll take the exception of 15 because I'm the only one who hadn't appointed somebody through the Board of Adjustment.
No, you're not. We never voted. We discussed this last time. We have not appointed to Board of Adjustment. We appointed to zoning, not Board of Adjustment because it had to go through zoning to be approved. So we have... You agreed with that last time?
Mr. Schnall?
We have not made any appointments to Board of Adjustment.
Not in relation by Mr. Schnall?
We have appointed only to zoning.
Mr. Schnall, you had a comment?
Well, you've only opened Item 14, and although I heard Mr. May suggest that the same issue would be applicable to Item 15, it seems to me that we should have the council take whatever action the council as a whole wants to take on Item 14 and then move to Item 15. So let's confine this discussion to simply the question of appointment to members of the Architectural Review Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall.
So I have a nomination, so...
It's your item?
Yes. Well, I just said, I was going to defer to seat number one if Mr. Isbrand wants to make his nomination.
So we're not tabling this?
No, unless Mr. May isn't ready. That's the question I asked him. He didn't answer.
I'm just ready for some action. Mr. Gregory, yes, sir.
I move that we table this until January 20.
We have a motion to table by Mr. Gregory?
Second.
A second by Mr. Isbrand. All in favor?
May I just... I'm sorry.
All opposed?
Well, I'm ready.
Tabling till next meeting? Four with one.
But I would remind us that based on the ordinance that we passed last month, that we have a clock ticking now to complete these. So I know that, and I applaud Mr. May, your intention of reaching out to try to solicit more community interest, and likewise, Ms. Winger, with your interest in doing that. So I appreciate that and the time to be able to connect with more residents.
Does that clock only... That's only for Architectural Review and Board of Adjustments? That doesn't apply to the Ad-Hoc, I believe. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure that's clear.
By the way, if anybody knows anybody that wants to serve on the Ad-Hoc Committee, let me know.
Okay. Item Number 15, consider an act on appointments to the Board of Adjustments. Ms. Winger?
I'm sorry. Well, I think we've decided to table both of them.
We have to do them independently?
I'll go ahead and move to table.
I'm leaving it up to Mr. May because this was his suggestion, and I will accept it.
So we have a motion to table by Mr. Sanderson until the next regularly scheduled meeting?
That is correct, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
I'll second.
A second by Mr. May. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council.
I move to adjourn.
We have announcements by Mayor and councilmembers, if you don't mind?
Please, go.
Okay. Mr. Isbrand, I'll let you take the lead. Mr. Sanderson?
I have nothing to say. Thank you.
Mr. May?
Just two items. First, as promised, I want to start the evening to meet your council representative to begin on January 7. I'll be having dinner at Sushi Hana at 6:30. The manager is very excited to open up the back room. I'll have dinner there. Anyone that's welcome, wants to join me is welcome, and we can discuss whatever is on your mind. I hope that this becomes a tradition. I challenge my other colleagues tonight to do the same and to boost our business here in the area of Castle Hills. The second thing...
So the open bar, then?
Excuse me?
Never mind, I'm just being a bad joke here, just asking if that was an open bar.
No, everyone will be on their own that evening. Just to be clear, those that are listening at home, you know, your meal's on you. So the second thing I wanted to do is wish our city employees a Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and for all the citizens that we look to the right, to the left, and across the street, if there's anyone that seems to need a hand during this holiday season, we extend it.
I was kind of wondering if you're going to be by, and that would be there for sure, Mr. May. Ms. Winger?
Oh, just Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone.
Mr. Gregory?
First question.
One thing that I just want to add is we had the opportunity to go door-to-door on the southern half of Castle Hills from Honeysuckle to the east, knocking and seeing if anybody needed smoke alarms in cooperation with the Red Cross. We ended up installing 33 alarms. So that was a great opportunity to meet our neighbors and check and see, and some people didn't have batteries in there, so grateful for the people that came out. Mr. May was one of them. I believe you were there too, Mr. Isbrand, is that right?
I was not there.
Okay, I'm sorry. But it was a great opportunity, and something so small can make a life-saving difference. Thank you so much to the Red Cross and our volunteers. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to the Castle Hills Women's Club for delivering, of course, arranging and delivering Christmas cookies to all our employees. We appreciate it tremendously. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now, your turn, last.
Now, I'm ready. Actually, I wanted to bounce off that and yet again recognize the Castle Hills Women's Club for the great job that they do. And this weekend, they'll be at Fort Sam Houston laying wreaths for the holidays on the tombstones there, so it's quite moving what they do for our community every day. And my last comment would be, we are such an incredibly diverse community in so many ways, including our religions, and I would like to take the opportunity to wish everyone a happy Hanukkah, a Merry Christmas, a joyous Kwanzaa, and happy holidays to all of you.
Thank you so much. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
First?
Second.
Second, my Mr. May. All in favor?